Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. We are now going to start the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Can we call for roll, please?
Yes. Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Ashley Henson.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Jordan Scott.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to item number two, citizen comments. See, the only one I have is this one here at the back.
Correct, that's the only one that we received by mail.
Right, okay. I'll go through that real quick.
I don't know if-
Or do we need to read that at the end?
So, I don't think they're here to actually speak on it. They just-
Right.
That's just one of the responses, so I just print it out for you for reference.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's a part of one of the items later down, so-
Okay.
Bring it up then, or just accept it as is.
Okay, sounds good. All right, being that we have no citizen comments, we will move on to item three. Three A, Elect a Planning and Zoning Vice Chair, submitted by Kennedy.
I nominate David Barrow.
I'll second.
We gotta, we gotta let Kennedy do her thing first, please.
Trying to jump the gun, trying to cut me, cut me out of it.
Pistol Pete over there. We gonna get there.
Quick draw.
Just as she said, what we'll do with this one is we'll take a nomination for a vice chair, take a vote, and then it will be in effect.
All right, so, sounds like I don't have to say anything.
I'd like to nominate David Barrow.
We have David Barrow, we have a first and a second for David Barrow. Do we have anyone else who would like anyone else to be vice chair? All right, can we call for roll, please?
Yes. Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Do I need to recuse myself from this vote? Like, I actually don't know the answer. This is, do I recuse myself from this? No?
No, you're good to vote.
Yes?
Uh, Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Barrow, on being the new vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you by my side. I think you're a great asset to the team. Yeah, we gonna call each other team for right now. But, I think you bring a lot of knowledge, passion, and understanding. You have a great concern for the citizens. And you take a lot of pride in what you do up here behind the dots, so thank you for volunteering and being a part of this board. And looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
All right, that moves us right along to the next item, three B.
All right, item three B. Consider action to approve amendment meetings from the March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Has everyone had a motion over? Okay. Got a motion?
I second.
And a second? All right, can we call for roll, please?
Ishmael Harris.
Even though I wasn't here? I mean, I watched it, so, okay, yes.
Yeah. Uh, Ashley Henson.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Uh, Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to item three C. Hold a public hearing and consider action on a recommendation for the Valverde North zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning of six point two one eight acres out of the Nancy Blakely Survey Abstract Number ninety-eight, located west of FM nine six nine within the city of Bastrop. From P three residential to P five core is zone in Attachment one.
All right, good evening, Commissioner. So this is the rezoning of the Valverde North. This lot is a part of the larger Valverde development. You can see it here in the center. It's this red lot right here. This lot was originally zoned P three per the development agreement, and the developer is wishing to come back and zone it P five so they can do the essentially commercial development that they're wanting there. It's going to be a multifamily residential complex. It consists of eighty, sorry, forty-one buildings and eighty-two units. They're gonna be double unit occupancy. So with this, move forward. You can see this here in relation to the rest of the development. It's in the top right-hand corner. It'll be matching the lower right-hand corner lot as well, which is P five. That is also doing the multifamily. Here is their proposed site plan that you can see with the eighty, with the eighty-two units, and how they have it laid out, as well as the green space in the top left-hand corner. They will be, they will get access, previously it was called Valverde Avenue. There was an issue found in nine-one-one addressing where Valverde Avenue is added too similar, too similar phonetically to a different name, so they have now changed it to Puerto Plata Avenue instead, to negate that conflict. So they'll get access from that road, which will be a part of the Phase One Public Improvement Plans that have already been previously approved. When it comes to impervious cover, this development agreement allows for a maximum of seventy percent lot coverage. Currently there with this design, they're proposed at sixty-two point one percent impervious cover, so they're well with below their, their maximum impervious cover allowed. And currently on this one, all that we have received, and it did not save, I had notifications up there. We sent notifications to property owners within two hundred feet of this lot, and we received one in opposition.
Question?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time telling where that is in relationship to what we have in our packet.
This one? It's this top, oop, no. Right here.
Right, so the-
That's just it, right there, all of this fits into there?
Yes, sir.
So all of those, all of the previous map fits in that one spot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, the previous map shows, includes some of the green space, because as you can see right here in the top left-hand, right here, there is some green space added that is a part of this overall development, but that's, they're allocating that for the green space.
Do we know what their plans are for their green space?
Um, we do have the developer here, let me, let me introduce yourself.
Yes, can you please introduce yourself and your company that you're with?
Absolutely, thank you Chairman. My name is Brian Grace, I'm with BGE. I'm the civil engineer here on behalf of the developer. And that space in the northwest corner, the bulk of that is gonna be for stormwater management detention. I know there is a small amount of grass space that will be there, but I don't think there is any current plans to actively program it due to the limited space available.
So, we're heavily, in my opinion, trying to really make sure we look out for the families who are having play spaces and green spaces and things like that in incoming neighborhoods. So, can you kind of fill us in, what are you gonna do with those green spaces? And, I mean, you're close to the seventy percent, right? So, what's to say you won't find something to occupy that point eight percent? Or is there, are you looking at ways to maybe reduce that?
So the, for the people who live in this community, it's part of one shared community with the lot to the south. If we go back to the, if you look back at the concept, there's the purple-coated lot there. So it'll be part of one, I'll call it cohesive community. There is an active amenity center, lawn space there, there's a pool available, places for, you know, people to run around, they could throw the bocce ball around. So all the residents there would have access to that space. So that'll be the program, green space, open space, play space for the residents.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Yeah.
Pete, go ahead and do it again, David.
So, the plan is to make these, this multifamily, correct?
Yes, it will be duplexes specifically.
Okay.
Single-story or two-story?
I believe they are single-story, but I would need to confirm that. I can provide an answer to Kennedy.
Can you tell me how many there are in here?
Yeah, so there will be forty-one buildings in total for eighty-two units. So the duplex will be, you know, one unit, and we say a building, that'll be two units per building.
So what does that do to the traffic in and out of the entire subdivision?
So, traffic out of the subdivision would be pretty limited impact. The primary mechanism, or the, the bulk of the residents there will just be coming in and out through FM nine sixty-nine. There is a traffic, a currently executed traffic agreement with, between Tech dot there, and we'll be ensuring that we are complying with all provisions of the approved TIA with Tech dot.
David? What was the original plan for that space before you guys had returned to us? Because I believe, and Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong, this was like a two-hundred-and-thirty-acre thing that we just approved like three months ago? But there was nothing there?
The entire development is three-hundred-and-ninety-nine. It was previously zoned P three. Was it in error, or did the plans change?
It was done, it was, uh-
It was originally done, I think, twenty-twenty-one when it was approved, and it was done for, I think, a single family. What I believe is that the, due to the limited size of the parcel, it was just not very effective as a single-family kind of thing, just with minimum lot size requirements and right-of-way dedication.
So, right across the street, we're gonna have a bunch of multifamily units? So right across nine-sixty-nine, there's a bunch of units being built currently, correct?
I don't know across nine-sixty-nine, on the south side of what was formerly known as Valverde Avenue, will be more duplex units that will be functionally the exact same as these.
Are you referring to Pearl River?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that's in front of complex areas.
Right. Typically, P five stuff is attempting to lift, to increase density but decrease the amount of traffic. How are you guys, as a development, gonna promote your people to be able to go across all the commercial services that are gonna be provided by Pearl River?
I would need to look into that farther, and also need to take a look at our approved TIA with Tech dot, right, because that would also speak to some of the background traffic and other approved developments.
Yeah, I just have a concern because, you know, there won't be the services that typically those people would need close to them in, in that area, because everything else is just single-family, correct?
That's correct, farther into the project.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I got a question for you, though. All right, because so I'm, you know, to add to what David is concerned about. I see that you guys have a couple of what looks to be construction roads going out onto seventy-one, right?
That's right.
Okay, so-
FM nine-sixty-nine, or sorry, hold on. Do you mind specifying which road you're-
On the south side of the division, right, yeah, down there, where, on the south side of the division.
Yes.
Right, subdivision. It's the red one, which one is it? Top one? Right there.
Yep.
Okay, so you have one there, and you have one there, right? That's gonna be for construction, right? Is there any plans on eventually making those into roads that connect on the seventy-one to alleviate what's going on to nine-sixty-nine? Because if you hadn't seen it lately, right, that is a traffic jam out of this world that I've never imagined would be there. And adding this to it is, is not gonna help it out, right? So, do you guys have plans on alleviating some of that?
I don't have the answer to that. I'm not the engineer for the remainder of the project, so I, I can speak to the specifics of this site and the one just south of Valverde Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with those two lots, they're, they're, it's the same development group, but two different developers. It's DHI versus DR Horton. He is just for the, the north and the south lots.
Okay, I got you, thank you. You, you have something, Andres?
I was gonna say, so here few, here in the next few months, you'll probably see us gonna bring back the transportation master plan for you guys to start reviewing and helping us make amendments to that traffic master plan. Part of that will be the allocation of these additionals. The property they own, they don't own to the south, when that gets developed, we will extend as well as Woodlands Drive extension, so that they can go all the way back. There's gonna be all those tie-ins, those are part of the future plan. It's not currently, we're gonna have to wait to see what happens, we call it the DUF property, but that southern portion, to see when that develops, is when we get those extensions that you're asking. But we are well aware and watching the timing as it relates to their TIA that he mentioned on nine-sixty-nine, and how that's gonna be developed, and we're gonna really have to watch and get with Tech dot. And that's gonna be part of the transportation master plan to make sure that when we widen out, and when we widen nine-sixty-nine, and how that fits back. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
We're aware, we're-
Okay.
We're aware that it needs, we're just, it's all about the timing.
Right, right, okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
James Development Services, and want to clarify one thing, as you see the green lot to the top right-hand corner, so part of zoning, you have transition. That's currently outside the city, but we are meeting with them, working with them. That piece will be eventually annexed into the city, and it's gonna be a proposed commercial use. So it's kinda seeing your transition of commercial, multifamily, to residential. So, if you wanna give you that visual overall zoning, that eventually will come in and be commercial, be a commercial use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm confused again. What are we talking about?
He's talking about the lot up here, that's next to the, currently it's not in part of this map, because it's not a part of this development.
Right, right, right. Between nine-sixty-nine and what we're, in their lot, right?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
You're saying that's gonna be commercial?
Yes, yeah, they're currently in the process of annexing.
Okay.
So DR Horton bought the whole subdivision, that was a separate piece that now somebody has bought, is proposing development.
Thank you.
David, you said you had something?
Yeah. So, the developer sent out a notification to people within two hundred feet?
We did that.
How many people are within two hundred feet?
I don't have the total number. Do you, Alondra's gonna check for me right now. Yeah, it's, it's not very many, just because most of it was the colony above and Valverde as a whole.
So, we have one person who wrote in for opposition?
So-
It looks like they have a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We notified a total of twenty, twenty-six people, sorry, twenty-five, sorry, twenty-five.
Thank you. So we have one person who wrote in, they have a property address, but then it looks like they have an opposite mailing address? Is this their primary residence or not?
It all, what we do is when we mail it out, we mail it out to each property ID with, within the boundary, and sometimes they don't, they have a different mailing address, so they might not live there.
Do you know if they are, if they have a business on that property? Or if they have concerns because of the construction, maybe they're in agriculture, or energy, or something else?
That I'm not sure. Yeah, she's gonna, she's gonna pull it up so we can kind of see where the property is.
Yeah, it's gonna be a single-family that's inside the colony.
Okay, do we have anyone who's voted for approval of this? Or, I'm sorry, have we had any neighbors write in saying like they are for this?
We only received one response out of the total twenty-five.
No problem, thank you.
So, so twenty-five responded, but they didn't-
We sent out twenty-five, one responded.
Okay, oh, so it was, okay, I got you.
Yeah, there's twenty-five property IDs within two hundred feet of that development, and one of those properties responded.
Right, I got you. All right, do we have anything else? Gary, Pete, you got anything? Y'all are good? Y'all happy? Good, all right.
I guess the last question I had was about how much space from the development, or the duplex complex you guys are putting in between, I guess, the property line, like how much that space, the green space, if you look? Do you, do you know about how approximately, how wide that green space is going to be?
Yeah, I know it varies, but I, I do believe the setbacks are approximately ten feet, or maybe seven and a half, but we can confirm that.
So, so this development's gonna butt up pretty close to the edge of the property?
Yes, that's correct.
To the setback, okay.
There will be, I think, some street trees and plantings being put in, the, the former Valverde Avenue as part of the subdivision.
So like some sort of, like, the, the ones on the north end of the property, they'll have like a fence line?
Yes.
Then it'll be like a tree line buffer between them and the other neighborhood?
On the north side, I don't know, but between the former Valverde Avenue and this site, there will be street trees planted inside of the right-of-way in that space.
And there should be single-story duplexes, correct, or two-story?
I believe that is the case, but I would need to-
But you say you're gonna get back to us on that one?
Yes, yeah.
Please do. All right, Ashley has a question?
Uh, uh, sorry, go ahead. Well, what I can say is if it's eighty, or forty-one buildings and eighty-two units, they would be single-story.
I can confirm, there's a note on here, they're single-story.
Um, I'm curious to understand how the adjustment to a higher density has been accounted for in the drainage plans at all? If there's been any adjustments to the original?
Yes, it has. In fact, if you go to the, that site plane there, so the original pond actually was expanded slightly to accommodate the additional impervious cover. So if you see the hatched area in the top-left corner of the exhibit shown, that's the expanded pond area to account for that.
Great, thank you.
All right, does anyone else have anything? All right, great dialogue.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion on?
Motion to approve.
Do we need to know the specifics? Oh, yeah, we do need to close the public hearing, excuse me, thank you. So, if we don't have anything else, we'll close the public hearing. All right, now that the public hearing is closed, now we can make a motion, Gary.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, as written.
Second.
P five.
We have a motion and a second. Can we call for roll, please?
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
And Jordan Scott.
Yes.
All right.
Just to let y'all know-
Motion was unanimous, thank you.
You're recommending approval for council. Council has the final say. It'll go on May fourteenth for first reading, and if it gets approved, it'll go May twenty-eighth for second reading.
All right, thank you, Kennedy. All right, now we're going to move on to item three D. Consider action to approve Valverde North. Final plat being six point two one eight acres out of the Nancy Blakely Survey Abstract Number ninety-eight, located west of FM nine-sixty-nine within the city of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Attachment one. Ms. Kennedy?
This is the exact same lot we were just speaking about mere moments ago. And so you can see the location, it's west of nine-sixty-nine. This is the proposed final plat. It has the easements going through it as well. And just depends on the approval from city council of the rezone.
Right, okay. Do we need to make any kind of motion on that?
Yeah, it would be, it would be-
Okay, recommended to move it on to council?
So this one wouldn't go to council, it's the zoning concept scheme that goes to council? The final plat is what's before y'all to approve.
Okay. Did y'all get that down there?
It's the same lot.
Yes.
Same, same lot, we're just, we're voting on the final plat.
He's trying to help me stay up, keep up.
You got anything down there, Jordan?
Just to clarify, you're saying the vote needs to be made with the condition that it be, the zoning change be accepted?
It doesn't have to be, it can be just, just rate approval, because this lot can still exist in the same configuration, because you're not approving the site plan for it. They, if they, they can keep this lot as it is, even if the zoning doesn't get approved, and do whatever is allowed within that zoning, or they can come back later on and do a replat if desired.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, resident, thank you, Kennedy. That's how we keep the citizens informed. All right, so we need to make a motion on this, please.
I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Did you catch who that was?
Yes.
Can we call for roll, please?
Uh, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Ashley Henson.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
And Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
All right, the vote of yes is unanimous. On to item four, four A, future development-related items. Yes, sir?
Yeah, just mentioning, in the month of May, we do plan on doing a P and Z training, in which I'll be leading and hosting and putting together with Kennedy, just to kind of reemphasize and kind of reorient ourselves with the regulations and procedures for planning and zoning. And we'll cover a bevy of topics, all the way from plating to, you know, SUPs, everything that comes before this board. So, I really look forward to getting the opportunity to help reemphasize the things that are in front of us, and hopefully answer some questions if you all have any, so be prepared for that. I think we're planning for the end of May.
May thirtieth.
Yeah, so, just giving you the heads up now.
So should we just bring our pillow down here, is that what we do?
Bring a blanket, too, it gets cold in there at night.
It seems like we're here every night.
It'll be during the regular scheduled May, it's, it's the fourth Thursday of May.
I was just kidding.
I got it, I gotta let you know, though.
She's just saying how much she loves it up here, that's all.
I've got mine in my office, don't worry.
All right, so, all right, we don't have anything for four A?
That, that was it.
That was it, okay, awesome. Four B, Development Service Department Monthly Project Volume Report.
So you have in front of you a report that doesn't really reflect how busy we are. I'm gonna do, we're gonna do a better job of kind of painting a picture of what's really going activity-wise. These are just numbers of different permits applied for in different categories. Probably the biggest one to make you aware of is two projects, Tesla at the Buckeyes is expanding and adding twenty more charging stations. So anybody that drives an electric car, you get twenty more spaces to plug in. And probably the biggest one you need to be aware of, be careful, is HEB is doing a twenty-three thousand square foot slash twenty-eight million dollar expansion to the right side, which is, you know, the barbecue stuff, and you see, so as you go visit HEB the next six to nine months, it's gonna be a lot of activity going on, so that's what's happening. I want to make you all aware of what's going on at HEB. Going to the right.
No, no up.
With HEB, with the barbecue and all that, that's what they're doing.
They're going to the right. What does that mean, when you're looking at HEB, they're gonna move into their-
To the side where the loading docks and stuff are.
So where the curb pickup is?
Yeah, okay.
Right there.
And if you remember, part of this, this has been a process, I guess, six months, probably about six months now. You saw the activity out front, that was building a bigger detention pond, adding the required parking. Now that that's done, they can come and do this phase.
Okay.
Yeah, any questions, any specific projects you see going around town? I guess y'all see Pearl River's going up quickly, we're doing framing inspections on those, so hotels going up on Agnes over there on Bullhead that's going up, you see that going vertical, so.
When are we gonna get some trees over there?
On-
Pearl River.
Pearl River, so Pearl River and apartments, those will come. Good question, and Andres can jump if he wants to. We're working on the commercial development. We're giving up there on the commercial development?
Yes, we're working with Cendaro, which was Pearl River, now it's Cendaro, which is the commercial portion of the southern side. When they come in to do their, their site plan and their, that's when we'll catch the trees and have them add. And also, they still have the outstanding, I guess, bill or invoice that is still a portion of from when they took down the original set of trees, that still has to be ironed out as they close out that project, for both the apartments and for the commercial side.
Are, are we gonna get a various size of trees, or they're all gonna be smaller and we have to grow them, or some mature trees, or?
It'll be a variation of trees. I believe in their site plan that they'll submit, will have, have that scale and have what they're gonna, and then that's based, what we base the fees off of. Because we set a number and said you owe us this much, but then they can come and use that money to, to put back the trees, and then we're gonna verify that based on the sizes.
Thank you.
So we still have, we still have an opportunity to, to, to make that, make the trees not a whole, right?
Right.
We can't, won't do that, but there's also some green space, and this will be the, pretty much the last development that will be under the code when we bring the next one to y'all about how we're gonna take parkland and how, what we're gonna do for future developments for green space, right?
Right.
This is the last agreement that we're signing as to like the, what we've talked about during our, our meeting the other night, where we talked about giving drainage wells and drainage areas to us. This will be the last one, that's that one. This was a previous development agreement, and so you'll see that come before you here shortly, and you'll have some green space, but it's gonna be a pond with some fishing and some things like that dedicated to the city.
Awesome.
Any other questions, anything else?
I have an unrelated question.
Sure.
When is it, when is Agnes gonna get extended?
Uh, so Agnes, we plan to bid Agnes in July of this year, and then we anticipate an eighteen-to-twenty-four month build time. So you should, actually today, we spoke to the developer for Pecan Park Commercial, which is the south of, the south side, south of Wendy's, all the way back to Sterling. They're gonna probably, I think he wanted like us to approve some plans in like three weeks. He wants to get started on what is, what's the name of that street? Orchard.
Orchard.
Orchard, which is the street beside South Side. He wants to get started on that, and so Orchard there will extend down to Agnes, and then Agnes will extend across and off to Hunter's Crossing, so hopefully pretty quick. It's about timing, I'm gonna say, timing, 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 so, we're getting it. Blakely too, Blakely's on, we're going through the grant process with Blakely right now. Hopefully we can get, we're about a sixty percent design right now with Blakely. We should be getting those anytime this, this next couple of weeks, the sixty percent plans. When we get to a hundred, then we can bid. It's just gonna be based on the grant, when we receive that grant funding, as to when we get started. We're hoping to get that one kicked off around the time when Reed Ranch is ready to go. And then you'll see, Burleson, are they gonna see Burleson come before them? Or Burleson's already done?
Oh, okay, I was gonna ask about that, yes.
Yeah, Burleson East is already, it's the one next to, we called it the Goat Track, next to, next to Lowe's. It's, he's got a site plan that's been submitted to us, we're reviewing- It's, he's got a site plan that's been submitted to us. We're reviewing that right now. We're also reviewing his public improvement plans. We should see that kickoff and go hard and heavy. He, we already have a pre-app with Longhorn Steakhouse. We have some others coming in that he's pretty well announced, some big businesses, and so that'll be exciting for everybody. I think some Pet Smart and some other businesses that are coming that have already kind of pre-announced. I believe Sprouts was one of them. So, there's some, some good things coming along that little deal next to, next to, next to Lowe's, as well as in front of Lowe's, we should see here hit the ground, go in vertical before too long. Is, they're already approved, is Chipotle and Five Guys. And so, hopefully, got some good stuff coming. So, any other questions, anything else?
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On this building, commercial, construction, new, says five. Cornfield five.
That's why I apologize, I need to go back and clarify what those five were.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back and clarify what those five were for you. There's, I covered the major ones, which was Tesla and HEB, but that could have been some real small project.
Okay, small stuff, okay. Nothing grandiose on the EDC or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Do you mind repeating what you said about Tesla?
Yeah, so the EV station, the EV stations that are currently at Buc-E's, they're expanding the number of stations they're going to.
Right, so they're just expanding more Tesla.
Adding twenty-six of them, you said, right?
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six, oh, twenty.
Twenty, okay, I don't know where I got twenty-six.
Uh, they're gonna go on the center aisle there. They're, should be doing the flat work and going pretty quick, so. Um, and then Mercedes is trying to put a one on the north side, so we're working through that with them right now. Any other questions, anything else? We got a lot going on.
Yeah, we, sounds like it.
That's just a portion, I'm a small portion of what we got going on, but we'd be here all night if I. Yeah, if we really reported, truly, if I could get it on paper, we'd be here all night, so. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
This is a concern, but I'm, I just didn't know how the city approaches this, but we've got a lot of development going on, residential and commercial. Does the city have contracts in place to be able to hold developers accountable if they don't finish projects?
Yeah, so we have processes, right, like, so let's say like a public improvement plan, which is all the public infrastructure that they're responsible for, which are streets, drainage, water lines, wastewater lines, right, those kind of things. We, we get, Resident, is it called like a performance bond?
Yes.
So, we get a performance bond that's issued by them, that they have a certain time to complete that, and if they don't, we can pull that performance bond. It's basically the cost of the construction of that. And so, we could pull that performance bond, use that to complete the, complete the project, and it's no, no, no money on the, on the city, it's through them. It's kind of like an insurance policy for us, for that public, and so a lot of those have, a lot of those projects have those types of deals, so, yes. We have an insurance, we have insurance kind of built into it. I say insurance, but there's different words. Performance bonds, there's, there's different verbiage, and Resident, maybe elaborate?
And I was gonna say, also, there may be some type of maintenance bond or warranty applied to it afterwards. Typically, those are for like two years, so if any other issues come up with the, how the project has been built, within that two years, they'll have to come back.
Like a street, once the project's accepted, like a street, when the project gets accepted in the street, we start using it, we start driving on it, and let's say a pothole shows up within that two-year mark, it's on them to come back and do the repair and make it right before the end of that period. Now, it's our, our responsibility as a city, and I think Sylvia's mentioned this to y'all, that we do a better job and do a good job of making sure we inspect before that warranty is over with, and that we track when that warranty closes, because we have a ton of projects. So, when that project closes, we have to make sure that we're paying attention and that we have a really good process about how those get closed out and when those warranties meet, so that we can go out and make sure that that gets covered before that warranty ends, so.
I just think it's really important to not be a financial burden to the city. Anything that we continue to do over the next twelve years with all this growth that's gonna happen.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. Any other questions?
That's why we want you to be vice chair.
Anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Add one more thing. Y'all know, this is the city's stand at this point FYI, but y'all know, Andreas has been acting as interim city manager effective yesterday. He's our official.
He's a, he's official. Congratulations, sir.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yeah, officials, assistant city manager.
From former fire chief to now assistant city manager.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Fireman, farmer.
We have a chief.
We already appointed, my assistant chief was appointed as the, Chris Stone was appointed as our fire chief.
All right, I like having.
He'll have to search for his number two, so he'll do double duty until he gets his number two, so.
I like having a fire chief as assistant city manager. I think that's good news.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I've, this will be my seventeen years I've been here throughout. I've worked in the police, fire, different departments, IT, I've done all the different departments throughout the city. So, I have a little intel into the different, the only thing I haven't done is public works, and I'm getting, that's wastewater, wastewater, right, so I'm getting into that now. Yes, thank you, appreciate y'all.
Jack of all trades.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have anything else?
Um, just for C, any items?
All right, let's go. Item four C, individual request from planning and zoning commissioners that particular items be listed on future agendas. I hope we have some from y'all from the other night, right? So, Ashley, Jordan, y'all have anything? I don't wanna call you out, but I know y'all brought some stuff to me, and it would help if we brought it out here, so.
Did, um, did all, did we get the other members of the other boards on our email list?
Not for this meeting, because the, the list was sent out before Monday meeting, but we, we will have it going forward, yeah.
Okay, yeah, mainly the two I'm interested in collaborating with are the Parks Board, because maybe have them come in and do a little something about their plans and their, what they're got going on, so we can just keep that in mind, and also the cultural arts with the bird stuff too would probably be of interest to have somebody come in and talk to us about what they got going on or talk to the, the citizens about it as well. I think those two intersects would be important to talk about.
Yeah, I would agree. I think one of the action items we discussed was to kind of assign a liaison from, from P and Z across all the boards, so something that we should likely discuss.
Right, yes.
And I would.
Do that as an action item?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think so.
Pete?
I would like to request that the city manager provide us with documentation that she was told that we cannot have some kind of, you know, discussion about what came into the B three code and how it was developed and what it means, and a kind of a translation and a tutorial on the B three code, just so that we know where we're coming from as we move forward. I think it's important for all of us to have some history about it. And she mentioned that she was told we can't look back, and I would like to know who she, who told her that and why.
Okay.
I had another. I think it would be beneficial to share with the P and Z commission the details around Bird City and Tree City and what that means, so that we can be mindful of that when we're thinking about preserving the public spaces.
So, you know what would be a great idea? Is if we can have a group field trip to Hornsby Bend, right? Because I know Kevin Anderson there, he does a lot of collaboration with Bastrop, and that's a heavily migrated area for birds, right? And so, kind of just be a great field trip.
It's a great place.
Sure.
For bird watching.
It, it is. I have some awesome photos.
What I'm hearing is you wanna spend more Saturdays with us, got it.
Pete's already trying to get her pillow up here, you know?
Might as well move the whole cup.
Might as well put a bed and couch and everything.
One last thing, I'm reviewing my notes. I believe Sylvia mentioned, and I think that multiple commissions were, and boards were supportive of this, but a development one-on-one session?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, is that in the works?
It's in the works, yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
We got a lot for you.
Do you think this is recorded?
We have anything else? Gary, I saw it on your face.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, that's what's on your face. You're looking at the clock. We got a motion, do we have a second?
I second, but I have a question. When are we gonna vote in our new members to the commission? Or we don't vote on them?
Goes through council.
Yeah, I guess through council and the mayor. We have two applications currently in front of council and mayor.
I got it, thank you.
Then, then we can go through all the.
I got it, I got it.
Official stuff.
I got it, thank you.
But thank you, gentlemen, for coming here tonight and attended with us. You know, hope we didn't scare y'all off. All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're done.